You're ready with my president?
Okay, good. I'd like to call to order the Oakmont Borough Council regular meeting for August twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. We'll begin with Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Mr. Arnold. Mr. Brinkley.
Here.
Ms. Friday.
Here.
Uh, Ms. Holst.
Yeah.
Ms. Leonardi.
Yeah.
Ms. Pagnata.
Excuse.
And Borough Council President Ride.
Here. Okay, thanks. We'll take comments from the public first. We're trying to get sort of better sound in here. So if you can't hear us, let, you know, we're getting into something, okay? Um, so we'll hear comments on the agenda and other public related items at this time. Come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and let me hear your comments this three minutes. See, there you go.
So Rossia on Chamber Board. I just wanted to let the borough know, I'm not sure if you're all aware, that Karen De Turk, our Director for the Chamber resigned um at the end of last month. So interviewed four people. Our board meetings tomorrow morning. Um, we may interview some, we may make a decision, we may not. We uh, we're looking for a new director, so um, they had four applicants so far, and I'll keep you abreast of, you know, who the new director is for the, for the chamber. So we're, we're working along right now, and Kim Butler's pretty much handling things at the office there. So you need something, you can get all there, okay?
Lance Fielder stole point four for November eighteenth. There's no
We have separate committee for, for the um Fall Festival. Yeah, we have a separate committee. Actually, I'm on that committee. So um, yeah, we're still one ahead with the Fall Festival. Yes, that's all.
That's all still.
Place, yeah, absolutely.
Karen is on the uh, foundation too, isn't she?
Yeah.
Is she gonna be replaced or?
Probably, yeah. Yeah, well, I'll know more tomorrow after our meeting. But yeah, she just out of the, you know, two weeks after our last board meeting, she resigned. So we're, we haven't met yet, so I'll keep you abreast. Thank you.
Well, sorry, I was gonna ask, I heard, because there's two vacancies now on that, my um foundation, or the, my the one that still owns that parking lot next to Chelsea Grove. So there's um, because Joe McAndrew is on it, and I heard he resigned. So there's two vacancies. Are you appointing for both of those vacancies, do you know?
Um, I haven't heard anything on that. In fact, I don't know if you've met with anybody. Nancy, you were gonna try to find out about that parking lot?
We're working on it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna try to find out more myself tomorrow, because I, I don't know anything about that foundation and what's going on with that right now. And a lot of the board members on just the Chamber Board don't know.
Yeah, I mean, can you relay that, like, as a council, I think we want to help?
Oh, absolutely.
We want to help, and we want to see this, 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 this come to, I mean, to be finished.
As soon as I find out, I'll, I'll let Scott know, and he can let all of you know, okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Any other comments on the other?
Not sure. My letter has received. My name's Jeff Allen at Seven Twenty Four College, and I sent a letter in which was signed by several of us in our neighborhood, and asked if it was possible that our little section of college, which is uh, behind the barrier wall, that goes to that intersection could be made a non-sweeping area. We would be glad to uh, you know, occasionally, the dust gets a little bit heavy, sweep it ourselves, but it's usually not a problem, right? It's clear. But we're having the problem because we don't have driveways. We can't get our cars off the street. We park across the street, but it's very steep, and it's got the Belgian blocks, and we're kind of afraid, three of us are uh, over sixty, afraid somebody's gonna fall, especially coming in at night, on a Thursday night before we have to move the cars. And we'd like to see if there's a way to get a, their hands on that.
What's your street address? Are you where?
Uh, seven twenty four. It's the old, it's the old Kuna store.
Okay.
Used to be a grocery store way back when.
There's one of our five homes beyond the dead end.
There's um, yeah, there's a duplex and a single family home at the end, and then there's the three of our houses that are kind of like uh, just past the wall as it begins, they have a barrier.
So when the snow, when the snowball does go up, what's it do? Back up, or how's it turn around and come back?
I guess they go down to the end. I don't know. I never really noticed.
Yeah, you're not a very light street.
No. No.
So you're asking for both uh, snow and?
No, we really prefer the snow go away, but we're having a hard time with the uh, the parking situation for the uh, most of the time.
The sweeping.
Yeah, the sweeping. So the people are getting tickets, are you saying?
Yeah, we're getting tickets too. We didn't for a long time, but we're getting tickets.
Part of the problem is, if you look at those signs, you see it just says no parking on it. And that's designed in part to deal with the sweeping, but also plowing to make sure that the uh, the parking areas are cleared up whenever the time comes. So I, you know, we can certainly look into that, but it's not just a street sweeping issue there. It also allows the borough to know if there is going to be any kind of maintenance work done on the streets that they can usually count on a particular period of free parking. So again, I mean, we're, we're receptive to your argument, but it, it's not just a sweeping issue there. And if you do want the plow to go up there, they need to, to be able to predict which, you know.
Yeah, we have to get the car there, that, but we pretty much, yeah, would have to get any day when he's on a road.
Well, let us look into this.
Okay, I sent the letter, right?
I submitted the letter about three weeks ago. I'll sign it, so I'm not sure what happened.
We kept it internal till we came back and had council.
Okay, okay.
Okay, but yeah, it's not gonna be ignored. We will, we'll look at it, and as Dave said, it has a couple different purposes, but
But we just don't wanna break our necks crossing the street and park, yeah, to cross those cobblestones.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else? No? Okay, um before we go on, Scott wanted to have a few comments about the tragedy in Plum sort of on our behalf.
Personally, I know the mayor's going to, um a week ago Saturday, a friend of mine was killed in the tragic events of Plum Borough. I've known Michael uh, from his early days at um Butler County up in Saxonburg, and our, our career paths just overlapped just slightly. Um, like everybody who was killed in that tragic day, they all sort of in the capacity as good neighbors and as good people, and you know, their stories only can be told now because they're gone. And we should remember that um, Paul and Heather who dedicated their lives to community through the Sartre programs and, and what they do, and Kevin and, and Michael with Plum, and the father and son team with Casey, and Keegan, and, and unfortunately have to host their funeral this weekend in front of us. I'm sorry, I thought you were ready for this. Um it was a hard day. Um, you could just tell from the onset of just listening to sirens blowing in Murray's eleven miles away that something wasn't right. And then my so-called friends of managers around the region started texting. And as I mentioned to you offline, you know, Amber Yawn, our former borough engineer, lives in Rustic Acres, Rustic Farms, and I texted her once I realized where the incident was, and I said, are you okay? And she had the acid weight plane, that's a fortunate answer, so I got really nervous. But she had said, I'm okay, and all she said back was, it was Mike's house. And then it turned out to be actually Heather's house, but because I couldn't be close enough. Um, I don't know how all my colleagues are doing it, but the ones who are closest to this region are taking it well. Uh, my friend up in Westmoreland County had just called, talked to him on Friday about getting a manager intervention together, have lunch with some of the newer ones and friends. The last time Mike and I had some, you know, off the record conversations was noticing that renouncements for retirements were coming up. Murd- Murderville just opened up, and the color, other places. And um, he said, my God, all my, all the old guys are retiring, and maybe he's, are retiring. I said, no, Mike, where are the old people now? And he will always be fifty-seven. And then I know my friends, and everyone's goals with them, or meets with them, are gonna miss him. I know the local government cabinet did separate fundraising, raised almost eighty-five hundred dollars for the families in Rustic Farms. And I know our group of managers, we call ourselves the Washington Pennsylvania's managers, I mean, we're doing something, if not a September, I have something definite for the holidays. Um, again, service, they all died helping a neighbor. And that's something any of us would have done. And their story needs to be told. Remember that. That's what we're trying to find, the, the calmness in the chaos is, they're trying to help. And that's what they do. Thank you.
So can we put on the borough website some links to some of these, either GoFundMe or some of the organizations that are raising funds for the survivors?
We cannot think that we can. We did a social media post on Facebook page, and invite residents to our social media, that look at Facebook page for resources and outreach. We can ask for updates from, from Plum Borough, since they knew, and certainly try and
Put it on the, I, I don't use social media, so.
I understand, but we can find some on our website, too.
Put it on the, on the website.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, uh, so moving along with the uh, agenda, uh, the first is a motion to approve the minutes from the July seventeenth regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
On my donation.
Minutes from the July seventeenth.
Well, is there a second? Um, Dave's moved and John's seconded, I'm sorry. I just wanted to know who seconded. Yeah. Um, is, are there any, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? It passes unanimously. And as a motion for the August first, two thousand and twenty-three work session meeting? Wait, we don't need to do that. Yeah, that's um, just
If they weren't in your packet, then no, we move them separately.
I think they were not.
They were not.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, and then if there's any changes, we'll let you know, being good. Um, okay, uh, Borough Manager, the appointed boards.
Council, your first action of many this evening is payment number four to Allegheny Electric regarding the Bullbar Project LED conversion.
Make motion to approve partial payment number four in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-six cents to Allegheny Electric for lighting replacement. John has made this motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. Okay, and Patty has seconded. Any discussion? What, is this the, um, how much is due after this one's paid?
I'll tell you. I don't know if you're number five. I've looked up.
Okay. Oh, I see, it's for the same thing. Okay. Um, okay. Um, all those in favor? All right, all those opposed? It passes unanimously, and the second um, motion for partial payment five. Make a motion to approve partial payment number five in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars in the syrup cents to Allegheny Electric for lighting replacements. A second? I'll second. Okay, John made the motion, and Patty seconded. Um so, back to my first question. How much more do we owe?
We have retained about five percent left of the entire contract, which is about twenty-three thousand dollars.
And what do, did they specify?
It's the, it's, it's retained for punchless items. I, I, I believe the power has to be confirmed, return on, the lights light. Obviously punchless items, it's just showing, sure. But yeah, there's outstanding, any punchless items that are left to be done.
Okay. Do Kane want to actually burn the power on it now?
Well, the leaders attached, we did a work order about three or four weeks ago. But there's no word from back to Meligene's Electric. The, the, the construction superintendent's project has left the company, and so they're putting a new superintendent on top of Davis. That gets better and worse.
So we may or may not be waiting on the Kane one.
We're not waiting. I don't believe we're waiting on the Kane line anymore. I believe we're just waiting on punchless items and making sure everything works.
This is an electric box that initially didn't, they have a replacement board.
They, and they turned it, apparently, yes.
Yeah. Okay, um hopefully they will get this turned on, then.
I, I, it's quite a work, which is better.
Um, all right, uh, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Um, it passes unanimously. Um, I didn't put on the agenda, we didn't, um, this list report, but Kate, you have, I think you have something to add.
Yeah, so I will just report, I know that we have a couple pieces of litigation, and so I will not talk to the specifics of those, but a general update as to upcoming um, dates. We have, are, as far as the challenge to the recent parking ordinance update, um, that has been appealed um, and has been assigned to Judge Mary McGinnly at the Court of common pleas, who handles all the zoning matters now. Um, and there's the first status conference is scheduled, um, I believe in September, so that'll be an opportunity to go in and talk to the judge, and we'll get a clearer schedule after that. Now update accordingly. Um, and then the second piece, um, there has been an action and mandamus filed against the borough um, asking for specific enforcement regarding a property um, or lack of, or uh lots of enforcement and more not allowing a business to operate at five fifteen seater. Um, and so we will also be defending that in court broadly, along with the property owners there who have also taken.
Thank you. And that, the first one is an appeal following a ruling in the borough's favor by the
Zoning Council. Correct, yes. Yeah, so it's appealed, it was a very poor decision.
For those of us who don't normally get sued or anything, what, what does mandamus?
Oh, sorry, yes. Um, that's the legal term for when you're asking the court to tell a municipality that they have to do something.
So we've been requested to deny you deny the business requirements.
Correct, and so it's a way that they're asking the court, they're saying, hey, court, Oakmont Borough, under the MPC, there's a provision there, where property owners, um, you know, if you think your neighbor is in violation of zoning warrants, there's a private property action there. And so they're saying, hey, court, we don't think Oakmont's correctly enforcing its zoning requirements.
What, what part of the zoning requirement would you like us to enforce differently?
Um, there's a couple different pieces in there. They say that, um, and, but it does reference the parking. It seems to be their focus.
Hey, if you don't mind me asking, are we permitted to share who the appellant is on the one, and who the plaintiff is on the other one? So we like, so we can, I mean, again, we can be knowledgeable of that.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So um, it's the same, appallants and plaintiff, John Keith and his associated businesses are bringing the legal actions in both.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? No, that's all. Um, we're under administration. We have a lot of motions here. So we will try and do these straightforward. So uh, the first motion for resolution number seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, do I have a um, a motion? Do we need to read this? The person making, we sort of switched it so that the person making the motion reads the whole motion. So, all right, how about that? Just rather than that, we have been both reading it, and it seemed we've done it, and so you wanna make a motion, Ken?
Sure, okay. We'll make the motion to approve resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the borough to apply for the multimodal grant for improvements on Dark Hollow Road to connect Creekside Park to the Plum Creek Trail, with the borough committing thirty percent of the total project cost. Resolution number R seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three.
There is, when? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, do you need to read the whole resolution? No. I'm sorry, I thought you meant the um, the whole description.
I don't have to read this?
No.
No. Got it.
I mean, you kind of abbreviated it back from what it used to be. Yeah, when I was first in council, they made me read the entire thing.
Right. I was getting, right, yeah.
Yeah, we don't do that, okay? Uh, okay, so we have a, a motion to approve resolution seventeen of two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Okay, Dave's seconds. Um, and Scott, do you wanna give a little detail behind this?
This is the second of two multimodal applications we made on behalf of the borough. This one entails making pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements between New London Lane at the end of Dark Hollow Road to Creekside Park. The idea is to, obviously, keep the trail con- the contin- continuity of the trail from Creekside Park to Dark Hollow Road. The original plans had this bike trail behind the fleet of property, but if you recall back in twenty nineteen's flood, half the property was washed out, and he no longer agreeable to a easement. This improvement will leave the public right away. We are gonna ask uh, for some additional easement work to put aside, walking along further corporate headquarters, pedestrians, as well as that bike lane. This also includes provisions for, for financial assistance to put that bridge across Creekside Park, excuse me, across Plum Creek at the other end of Creekside Park to get over to the Plum Street area faster, that way to stop bicyclists from coming down Dark Hollow Road, which is always a concern to my state.
So this starts at Creekside Park.
It start, this, this part is, so it's lanes. Oh yeah, this, the first part is from Creekside Park towards the commons.
So that it keeps, at this point, this is not having, putting any bikes on Dark Hollow Road.
At least from Creekside Park. That's right. The other intent is the funding aside, that we can build a bridge across Plum Street at this end by the scoreboard at the original apartments, to eventually encourage people to go, that, bikers go that way, then cut through the block trail.
So they were just, because we're concerned that Dark Hollow Road is too narrow and too everything to have bike trails on.
It's a challenge, but the traffic.
Okay, anybody else have any questions about that?
I've noticed not, I've noticed in several communities that they're putting in speed bumps, kind of a rolling speed bump, and I wondered whether that's something that maybe the chief could have a comment on. Um, I know Plum Street is sometimes picks up, they pick up speed, but, um, like Dark Hollow Woods, there's a lot of truck traffic there, they might squish the bump.
I was gonna suggest, the lane owner is a lot heavy. So they have bonded, um, part of the bonding is if we add speed pumps, then they would be responsible for, I don't know how the effect of that would be.
What do you think about Plum Street? Is it, is it worth it?
They're state roads.
Oh, it is? Oh, forget it.
I would say they deny that. If you anything, my recommendation, maybe the speed pumps, which are made to go over at the speed limit of the road, so it doesn't cause damage if you're twenty-five mile per road, you have to make them so you can go over there twenty-five miles. I don't have a fucking advantage. Around Ten Street School, and probably two on Third Street, I had my recommendation, it would be something to be considered.
Yeah.
Just because the increased usage strategy and everything in that.
How do we decide if we wanna go forward with that, and what would that look like?
I believe the council has made recommendations, and it has to get approved, and then probably an engineering study to see what the, the Rockham Mall is the prime example of the speed. But that's, that would have to be set by the engineers that have contracted. If what it
Do we require like in addition, we study for construction, sizing, speed bump, we require traffic, do we need to do something like that?
I've learned all of that, but no, it's my knowledge, you would not. It would just be approved by council. Yes, we're going to try them in here, as we did. Speed bumps in the past, but they weren't speeding on safer speed bumps to people, but of course, getting, they, they got, they speed pump is what everybody's placing, city of this far, and they'll, and just install something. Right, what I believe is what's on in, but those are an engineer.
And that, that engineering from that is something that I would see Sean could do.
Yes.
So do you, would you have recommendations for the location?
Currently, I would recommend Third Street Ward, as a main to Holden, and also probably Main Street on the Bay Area. As we more or less take care of itself, we get to the road. But that would be more of a for
Can I ask you to write that up as a recommendation for consideration, because especially
Really, too, right next to eight, the bus school, because they come, they cut through, I love it.
The whole thing is a bunch of, the engineering, the engineer. There's their design statement.
Around the toll booth, absolutely gets bananas, so I completely get that sign, but
The, the whole design standard of publication four zero eight, which is the end of publication, they can't even say it else as well.
Yeah.
On a similar, is it possible, or does that have to be the state, that puts us, that putting a stop sign at six, then in Plum Street, on Plum Street?
That's, I, that's state, we have to prove it, I would say they're gonna die it because they denied one coming off of the bridge at Dark Hollow and Plum, where it turns into another roof. That's a state, that could be much more of a blind curve than than the state tonight, that said it doesn't work. So I think our probability of getting it is slim to none, because they denied that one farther up the road than we applied.
Okay, do you wanna try? Give it a try? No, I'm serious.
I know, I know, there'll be I know, I know, it's mentioned.
Never accept the first no as the final answer. Never accept the first no as the final answer.
Unless you're the child of someone, in which case.
I'll be quite frank with the eventual completion of parking lot on, um, next to Chelsea, uh, Advanced Way in Maryland. That now doubts will become a new centralized area for population between the restaurants and everything and parking. That we would do dual speed plateaus at Maryland and Delaware. Which slows down that whole corridor and then you would enhance the pedestrian safety by putting the pedestrian crosses on top of the. Speed plateaus. I put it there.
Wait, are you suggesting speed pumps?
No, it's not. We're using the word speed. It's called, the term called speed plateau. It's it's one percent grade up to about six inches. And then drops right down, but the flatness is about twenty feet wide at the top, ten to twenty.
Are you suggesting those on? Allegheny Boulevard?
Allegheny Avenue.
Allegheny, yeah.
And that's lower area.
But that's, that's a state road.
It is the PennDOT, PennDOT has published a book about traffic calming. Calming measures. They've published a book and they've used them on state routes with proper studies. That's the first hurdle.
I think I would recommend that Chief Ford and maybe his force, they could come to us with a comprehensive look at. What areas may need something like that before we would make a decision on any specific area. So. Uh, because I think that we have to look at, look at it more holistically from an Oakmont perspective, not just this street here, this street there. And do it in that manner. Um, and I would recommend, I would actually take the recommendations from you and your force and where you're seeing the majority of those. Speeders.
Right, assuming that the skin enforcement is clearly every one street. I mean, that is always, we always recognize that issue.
Well, um. I certainly think Tracy's idea is good that this kind of belongs in your value, but. And I think anybody who has a suggestion, I'm sure you would like.
I was just, you observed that at peak traffic time, sir. I don't think speeding on. Will our volleyball is probably.
There are thresholds that you have to reach before you can even start enforcing that. You know, they give you some leeway and speed, and it's up to your point during heavy traffic that's almost never an issue.
But the Scottish strategic locations of those, not only does that create a speedy bump. Your elevation, the pedestrian walking across the road on feathers ability. That's why I had to leave. It's a plateau. It's great. It's solving two things with one issue.
I think this will be a subject at the work session. And, um, everybody can come with their personal, their personal wishlist and good.
So that's.
All right, so we have the first motion we didn't pass yet. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to, um, adopt resolution number twenty of twenty three.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty of twenty twenty three. Adopting a procedure and disclosure fee for public record requests related to police department body camera footage.
And a second to this motion? Hey, John, Dave, Dave moved and John seconded. Kate, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah. Oh, well, because we had discussed it previously and there's, um. Now that the police have body cameras, um, there's a statute that says that's, uh, if someone wants to request that video. It's outside of the right to know law. And so kind of it clarifies. What the process is for requesting those records and sets the fee, um, a reasonable fee. And that, so they still get the review, but if someone ends up getting one of those videos, that we want to establish that fee now.
Any other questions on that?
That we established the fee?
The fee was a hundred dollars. Yeah, so we put a hundred, but we can, if we want to amend it, so it adopted. At a hundred and fifty instead.
I would recognize the hundred.
Yeah, we can do that. The resolution, um, with the amendment to one fifty.
Okay, um, we would need a, um. A correction to the resolution first may. No, first we have to retract. The second. Now, what are we doing?
Because he didn't, he didn't end his motion.
That's what we.
Whoever seconded and agree to amend their second. And it was make the edit.
Yeah.
Make a motion to amend the resolution twenty of twenty three, twenty of twenty twenty three to include a fee.
Okay, Dave has made a motion to amend his original motion, changing the, um. The fee to a hundred and fifty dollars and that was seconded by Mr. All. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments on that? No, if not, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. Okay, motion, uh, to adopt resolution number nineteen of twenty twenty three.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution nineteen of twenty twenty three. Notting are, well, I think, I don't think adopting is right in here. Motion to allow participation in Allegheny County's Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG. And the Home Investment Partnership Home. Program for the next three program years, beginning July first, twenty twenty three. And ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, which are CDBG years fifty to fifty two. And I believe this goes through the ADA court, is that right?
Okay, are there, is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, John, uh, made the motion for resolution nineteen and it was seconded by Patty Friday. Um, are there any questions or comments?
Yes. Yes, the ADA ramping, um, progress, projects we do annually. As well as the recent applications for bike removal to receive community development grant money. The county needs our participation in census data as a federal government order to qualify for the funding.
And we'll send a copy of this to Rob Frank.
We'll send it to the government, Rob Frank, we send it up to the county, yes.
Any other questions? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. And, um, I'll read this one because there's no brief version. Uh, the motion, a motion to authorize the borough manager to place a twenty seventeen Ford Explorer Police Interceptor. On municipal for sale. Um, can, will someone make that motion?
I'll make a motion, um, motion to authorize a borough manager. To place the two thousand seventeen Ford Explorer Police Interceptor on municipal for sale.
And a second? So, um, we have a motion by Dave and, uh, a second. By Chase Jamie, I already always say your last name, so I'm sure I'm not going to say it on the night. Uh, to Jamie Lee Marty. And, uh, there's any discussion? Yeah.
Yeah. This, this is not related to the sale of the police vehicle itself, but we have another. Sort of derelict vehicle in the parking lot here, emergency.
Let's just, let's, why don't we pass this? Um, any other questions? No. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously. Okay.
We have a, a sort of derelict vehicle in the parking lot here, the. SUV that hasn't moved in. I don't know, two years or something. Its tires are going, uh, tires are deformed at this point. It's been in one spot for so long. Maybe we want to consider selling it. Or doing something to revitalize it so it's usable.
Can you check in then?
I drive it.
Oh, you're driving?
I do.
Okay.
Is, is it actually drivable at this point? Yes.
The reason bike stuff, because that might be, the reason we kept it was the amount of freight you get, it's almost zero. A lot of work went into that car, unfortunately, cheap going growth to the length of a new vehicle. So that car had a lot of new parts, had a lot of expensive things operated. So the reason why they counsel the side key at the time is we already invested a lot of money in it. And it's going to be sort of throwing the money at that and the emergency manager needed it. At the time, that's what they were trying to get for and. The amount of money that it's placed, it's still a good vehicle, but not for every day. One mile a week.
My understanding was the battery was dead and it couldn't even be started. That's why it's in the lot for so long. Because it's, it's been in that lot for. So there's a new battery in it now?
Yes, we were in the spring because new side of the.
Okay. I, I, I just keep paying here. I've noticed there's a. There's a sinkhole forming in the lot across the street from the police department.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a, you know, there's a little hole. Where water pours in, but beneath it, it's been excavating, water's been excavating. Quite a bit of land. Maybe you ought to consider putting some fill in there and sealing up that hole. Major.
Yeah, it's one of our capital purposes is to improve the parking lot in general. Better strip it off and include the fixing sinkholes. At one time. But we can certainly do it. Martial repair.
Okay, and the next one was the VAV steering meeting, um. Number five. Yeah, this was, uh, on, um, Zoom. I'm not sure that everybody was actually invited, but it seems like it was mostly, um, the party of interest. And Scott attended. I looked over her shoulder for a little part of it. Um, so do you want to give a update on this?
Essentially, I've invited members of the VAV who are interested based on the. Public meeting at Penn Hills about making a presentation in September here. I believe we agreed it could be the greater meeting or the work session. What's the other?
The Boulevard must have come to the work session.
Okay, so we were invited both at the work session in September.
Yeah.
I'll remind them of that. Uh, VAV is going to speak about what, what they've done so far in the entire project. Mostly against some time, and at the same time, representatives from the Allegheny River Boulevard and Space Association can speak about. City.
And when was this?
Me the work section in September.
Right. So community planning, um, gone and held our first pedestrian committee update meeting or committee meeting and. You want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, it was a very successful meeting and everyone had. We. We went over the, uh, proposed charter. Still waiting with comments on that. Uh, Scott provided this with the, uh, John Gentile's report. Uh, which I've gone over and which I think is very good. At least I have no problem. Understanding what he did. Uh, it covers, I don't, my own SNB, maybe covering ten percent of. The sidewalks in Oakmont, but it's very thorough. And, uh, Scott also provided this with a. What do you call it? A cloud. Ways where a whole, what?
Folder.
Folder where all, a whole bunch of documents relative to. Previous pedestrian work in the, in the borough are located so that any member of the committee. Can review them and use them or downvote them if they want to make a change or something. So very appreciative for that. And, you know, I think it was a good kickoff. We should have a lot of. Work to do and I guess it's incumbent on me to start taking the next step. No pun intended.
Okay, yeah, there were, um. Four, three people, four other people from the community. Mary Kay Stein and Christine Little.
Right.
So that was three other people. Okay.
And also the shade tree commission.
Right.
Participated. Made a nice presentation, a lot of comments.
So he had a great deal of, um, many, many suggestions on. Ways to approach this, that he's going to be an important part of this committee, I believe.
Right. Right, right.
Yeah, that, um, I guess there's been a lot of work done. You know, in the world of tree people, on how to handle sidewalks and the, and the roots and. There's many different approaches that, you know. Didn't want to say tree hunters. I didn't mean it that way. Yeah, officially educated in trees.
His big concern is that sidewalk repairs often damage the roots. Of existing shade trees to the point where these trees will eventually die. And of course, it costs a lot of money to take the trees down. And he, he presented a number of techniques in which a sidewalk can be repaired. In, in such a manner as to minimize the damage to the roots.
He mentioned too that what some of these very large trees that have had to be taken down, you know, it can be between three and five thousand dollars. To remove these giant trees, so which is our expense. So these various ideas we were talking about. Um, kind of the idea sort of to get a buy-in from community members. And then we in turn can offer some cost savings probably, you know, through. Uh, cooperative paving and things, so. Uh, there's a lot, there's a lot to do before we're ready to, I think, take any action, but.
Right.
Um, and one of us, if we can.
Best look forward. And Scott did provide the, what the brand language?
Brentwood.
Brentwood, Brentwood, uh, approach to, well.
Right.
Assist the homeowners in signing up for this. So I want to thank everyone who attended that meeting and, uh, and Scott for presenting it.
Okay, good. And the Communications Committee, um, Amanda couldn't come today. So I think we'll just, unless you have a report.
I don't, actually not.
Okay, we, we have the. The. What, what, what was the name of the document that we reviewed?
We just like, and again, you said it and I just never got to choose to get it to Scott for the.
So I think it's just a matter of approving that. It's just.
Yeah.
Um, gonna wait. So she'll be with us, we hope, next time.
Yeah.
And, um, so we'll finish that. Um, can I have a motion to approve the warrant list for July twenty twenty three? In the amount of two hundred eighty six thousand, three nine hundred ninety nine dollars and fifty seven cents.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the warrant list for July twenty twenty three in the amount of two hundred eighty six thousand, all three hundred ninety nine dollars and fifty seven cents.
Jamie has made that motion. Is there a second?
I have a second now.
Okay, Tracy has seconded that motion. Any comments or questions? No? All those in favor? All those opposed, passes unanimously. Um, uh, but also now accept the motion for resolution number twenty one of twenty twenty three.
Before I make that motion, um. In light of the fact that we have a scheduled meeting tomorrow with the actuaries. I feel like we might be putting the cart before the horse unless there is a.
Right.
Unless there is a time constraint that requires us to take action on this.
September thirtieth, technically.
Okay, so we could pass whatever this ordinance.
Well.
Purchase motion based on what we hear from the actuaries tomorrow.
Well, these numbers don't change. This is the actual numbers we have to budget for no matter what, how we pay it. Based on state aid is the other issue that we're probably going to talk about tomorrow. But that's the number, I mean. Um, we can wait till September on a BTO, but just, this is the number. Um, we can wait till September on a BTO, but just, this is the number.
I I just feel like it might be, it might make sense to verify some of these things with the actuaries tomorrow.
Wouldn't the allocation change?
No, it's still going, it's still the allegation we have to make. How much in the state if you phrase that?
Oh, okay, so this is the natural, the, our, this is, this is our, that's total payment for the state aid plus.
I say it helps my. The obligation from the budget.
Okay, well, maybe we should wait till the, um, we have that meeting, just in case any other questions might come up. And, um. And this that we're approving it in September anyway. So.
All right.
Is that all right?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, so.
So we can wait, we can vote for that.
Okay. Both both of the motions, twenty-one and eighteen.
No, you gotta do it together.
Okay, then, okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number eighteen of twenty twenty-three. Defining employee contributions to the police pension.
Uh, Dave has made a motion to, um, approve resolution number eighteen of twenty twenty-three. Or is there a second?
Second.
Okay, John has seconded, any questions?
Act two oh five nineteen eighty-four mandates that the police department employee must contribute a minimum of five, a maximum of five percent. Any deviation from that must be approved by council, the collect current contract for the borough is. Oh, help me, that is three, thank you, three percent, so every year regardless, we spoke through revolution that identifies that it's less than five.
Okay. Any questions about that? Nope, um, all those in favor say aye.
Okay.
All those opposed? Uh, passes unanimously? And, um, so that he's careful of those, and, um, so moving on to public safety. Um, Sophia.
Um, yeah, well, the mayor's report. You have that in your package.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, there's the police report has submitted, if anybody has questions, we have answered on that. They didn't want to go over the aggressive driving detail, great thanks, sorry department, here and all the officers participated. This is the the detail of one being July fifth, August twentieth. We had sixteen days of additional enforcement, thirty hours. Your officer hours of enforcement, fifty-six graphic citations issued. Thirty-eight warnings issued with eighty-six total contacts. And just to point out, forty-six of these interactions were third of all. So this is our specific zone enforcement, this grant is starting, so we've moved back, so. That's what was produced on this one, we have another one coming up in March. Any questions on that?
Does that tell you that we need to change something or do something additionally?
I'm not unlike my business, put barrier across there, but we've had at least four of these citations people drove around the barrier and police.
The police.
And at least, not just the barrier and.
So if we had an island, didn't we?
Yeah.
Port chop that we've previously discussed, would that prevent that?
Most of it is the, the right turns.
It's the two o'clock before.
And that, really nothing you could do unless you put an automatic alarm that down and back. So that's just, the other thing is better an overhead sign. Which is gonna cost money, but an overhead sign that said no rain turns. But you'll see them a lot of the city.
I thought we already just worked that.
Those, but that's good, this is the number, light and low rate terms.
I thought we were already getting.
That's the most effective.
Yeah.
Yeah. You've seen coming across the bridge, there's multiple signs every. So that is one that just takes some of the clutter off the place for rainy drivers.
These these right turn, these right turns are from, they're essentially crossing. Two to three lane, I mean, when they make the, when they make the illegal turn. And they're on hold, they're crossing.
Yes, if they're making.
Two or three lanes of traffic.
That would be the left turn, major enforcement. Straight across and left turns are big, and. But our biggest one trying to stop is the illegal right turn, supposed hours, which is seven to nine, two to four, which involves the school.
I think we need to make the community know this is being enforced, since the sign's been there for a long time. But how, I mean, can you have any ideas how we can?
Better signs, overhead signs.
Well, like something like right now, could it be? Like blinking light, like a, any kind of freestanding sign or?
They're already posted and. It's just, to be honest with you, I'll be mean to people. Right now it's even worse because again, the bridge is closed, we won't get a whole network. Now it's not supposed to be open until September fifth. We've seen a noted increase in traffic since the end.
But honestly, I actually thought those signs were just during school year, I wasn't sure that they were all year round. Cause I thought it was just, you know, I mean, it was like, I mean, I might have done that too.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't enforced it for a couple, I mean, I, people just think it's okay.
I I knew it was during the school year, but I wasn't sure, like the summer and stuff like that, I wasn't sure that it was applicable, but actually, now that you say it, and we're enforcing it's applicable year round, so. I do think that we probably, maybe we would put some sort of public service announcement in the the chamber newsletter or something like that.
And I was thinking some sort of, or even even your, um. Your, or you're like their text things, just to clock and do not turn right. During the.
I was curious how many are on residence, I mean, that right turn, a lot of them, a lot. Cause I watched, there was, I watched them, they're on the right turn, and I'm like, I'm gonna be good, I'm not gonna be like crazy. I'm gonna go straight, and I go, and I turn onto LA Avenue, I see them all cutting out going, they're all Oakmont people, they're Oakmotters. So I agree, like read it.
And the other thing is, we weren't, I mean, they're not looking at the clock to see if it's four o'clock or six o'clock to make that right turn.
That's the suggestion of a light sign, it's actually pointing out to you.
I think, I like that light sign, we get a price for that time, I think.
It can be settled tighter.
Yeah, and it would just kind of flash and catch your attention and, uh.
How much, how much, I mean, can we consider a price, how much is it?
You can come sixty thousand, yes, much from. Traffic control.
How much an art class is?
I'll check that, it could be.
An art.
Not only, we could write it as a.
Could be my first time job.
We'll investigate.
What's those, I'm not even. Coming up Thursday, which is in my mind, are far more dangerous. They flow down the ministry where they're still, I would estimate. Uh, that's forty-six probably, only just reading citations of a big file.
I had one who walked in front of me on, um. Saturday, I mean, that is, and that is, I'm hitting my horn, I mean, how I didn't hit her? She came, I made the left, I I was right there.
Those are the ones that. Crossed.
Yeah.
Made the left, it's a line, and so. I I. If if you commit a lighted sign there. Well, it's Thursday too, they're actually.
I mean, I think.
I made it to the area test.
They might have to the series test.
Yes.
We're basically.
I I hear about students, I really do, um, I think that lighted sign, I think we have to look into it, yeah.
So that sign would be unopened?
It would be unopened.
So do we need to get approval from Penn Doc with that?
The restrictions are already there, so all we're doing is answering as long as the signs match. And I was, because it's already, and I was already approved, we were saying.
Is this one of the grants you're shooting for?
Multi-modal grant was revoked in the third, for all the approvals, including the engineering of a roadway intersection. We can throw it, as part of the overall budget, we can install, you know, uh, 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 eliminated time of. No right turn coming off hold the bridge. And eliminate their left turn sign for Thursday.
Oh.
Always, we have, it is possible to be, I mean.
That's, that's how, that left turn is not, that's.
That's why we stop. Exactly, and it's signed that way.
Correct.
And, um, it's still happening.
Well, you gotta be kind backwards to do that to begin with, I think. That's not.
It is, it's a stock, yeah, for that left turn, but I'm concerned about, is that something that we could put? A flesh and red line, like we have. A couple of our stocks under that, that really, again, call attention to the fact that that science is that it all travel must right, okay? So, I mean, if we just, like, they're pointing red light, I would thought that. Pretty hard for people to say they didn't see that. I'll investigate if we can, if you want.
Yes, that's all I have, other than approved sale of the old car. New car is brand new, cameras flashing and soul and right, screen and so on.
You do have a tally on. On the, uh, part view.
That's not my.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure.
It's something that the title. Is, is is in the report here, there's forty, forty emergency medical calls, and that's actually low because we don't respond to. Presby nursing home or doctor's office, so we don't even list, so these are. Forty you see there is what we go to residential.
Would this part you give us?
Yes, yes.
See that the Presbyterian percentage went up this.
Yeah. Oh, uh.
Well, can we, uh, just along that line? Can we sort of formalize the, I think, Presby is already committed to a certain amount of funding for Parkview. Can we sort of formalize that? And also contact PSAB and get a firm estimate from them. On the cost of. Including this fee in along the. Of garbage and.
And.
Scene, yeah, yeah, that's a big municipal territory. I, yeah, so many agreements. Uh, but, yeah.
That's what we're efforting right now.
Excuse me?
That's what we're working on right now. We have a list of the properties that are on the billing list. Because there are some. And apartments that. Do not get insured, they'll sort of, you know, how many units are, so we can go accordingly, I mean, which is something.
And and do we have, are, have we firmed up a commitment, commitment from Penn, from Presby?
I think you called back, I think I said, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have a reasonable. Resolution.
So, so we, we pretty much know. What additional fee we want to. My. What additional fee plus the cost from? Pams, I'm sorry, not. From Pams. To actually send the bills out.
I think we need a definitive number of units that. From the Pams. And then once we get that, using the money the Presbyterian, um, has pledged. Towards this, then we can pretty much more specific.
So, so we'd like to do that so we can incorporate it in the.
Yeah.
The budget of next week.
Yeah.
Actually, we want to do that so we can. Have on the bills for. That's, I think, that's all.
And, um, okay, um, yeah. As Scott shared with us, sadness, sir, for my event. I'd like to share a little bit of how that date began. In October, before I saw this twelve. Uh, the fire department happened to be at Ten Street with the crane taking down the alarm. So. Of course, there was no siren up. At Ten Street, the alarm was down, but the other sirens had gone off, well, the crane was already out up at Ten Street, so as soon as they got notified. They immediately left and went to Rustic Ridge. They were one of the first responders on the site. Uh, there was fifteen of the volunteer firefighters that stayed. Stayed all day, they got back to the station about nine o'clock, they stayed all day. Um, because they were one of the first on the scene. Uh, Chief Flannick has. Begun some counseling sessions for them and some de-escalating. Cause of course they weren't realizing what they were getting in, coming to see. Um. Now, on the news, they talk about the fire hydrant, the fire hydrant didn't have water, I don't know if you've heard that, have you? Well, I sent to all of you a little sheet that is given out that dictates. The kind of line that feeds that fire hydrant into different areas, residential. Commercials, so that fire hydrant that was up at Rustic Bridge was only one designed for a residential of those homes and had an eight inch. Flow line to it, well, when it got hit with all of the hoses at the same time. It drained it and the pressure went down, so the news today was saying that fire hydrant didn't have water, so I didn't want our residents to think our fire hydrants could be in that situation. Now, Oakmont Water Authority maintains our fire. They flush them out and they paint them. And they make sure that they're all workable and designed to do what, uh, their area of, uh, situation is. So in case that comes up and say, how's our fire hydrant, so just let them know that, uh. We, uh, Water Authority maintains that, and each one has a different sign of a pipe leading to it. They let the water out. Um. Everybody around here has been affected somehow, knew someone, someone in that family. All the communities have been reaching out, working together, which they should, of course. So the funeral regions were between two funeral directors. And it was decided to have a viewing at, uh, Truby. And then the overflow parking, they'll use the Greek church parking lot. Now, the big concern is media coming in and people coming in that are not part of this, so, um. The chief has been working with the Plum Police also, Plum Chief. Cause that'll be all day Thursday and Friday, and then Saturday at procession. The chief is working with Plum Chief and they'll come down. Uh, cause they're gonna go up home to go to St. John's, they pick St. John's, cause it's a, a much bigger, um, it's a church. But they're allowing Methodist priests to come and do service, so again, all communities are coming together, which they should. Um, and, uh, be able to get through this for. Uh, and as, uh. Miss Friday had said, uh, the widow is a teacher at Burner and her other friends are teachers at Burner also. And then, um. One of the policemen, one was very close, had been by our place since some time ago. And he's one of the, he's one of the, uh, hall bearers, Michael. And, uh, he's married to a Garchuck girl, so, so, yeah, we're all intertwined and all close. And affects all of us, and it's really beyond apprehension that you can't even imagine, because. As Scott said, they were all, they were people of civic responsibility, willing to give anything to go help someone. And for this so tragically to occur. So if there's anything more we can do, I'm sure Scott will, um, let us know. Um. Uh, Plum has been coming out, um. Chief Flannick said, uh. The food that's been coming in, Chickaflay, uh, Arby's, uh, Skyeye. Stacks of food and water, they were invited tonight up to the Plum Borough Community Night. They had invited all the first responders to, um, thank them for all their help, so they have gone up there this evening. So if there's anything else that we can do, please let us know. And, um, our prayers are with all the families. Thank you. Um. So, um. Public works, um. Uh, contract for the final for Plum Creek Interceptor improvements tonight, a motion?
Make a motion to approve contract number twenty-two dash S one. Change order number two, final. For Plum Creek Interceptor improvements. Um. Which incorporates a decrease of a hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty cents.
Is there a second? No second. John made the motion and Patty seconded. Um, and Scott, could you? Kind of give us that? Picture on that one?
It was a six hundred and forty thousand, one hundred dollar project. We did a change order, increased it by eleven thousand dollars because we discovered two more buried, um. Santa store. And your manholes. Um, all told, even after the project was completed with actual used products and actual time. The entire project, six forty plus eleven minus one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four thirty-two is the final contract price. Which takes it down about a half a million dollar project, which was our original estimate. On patent. If you recall back.
Yeah, and this, this was one of the items. In the bond issue.
It is a lot of issue.
Why didn't it? It was less, it was less repair.
Less repair.
Than than anticipating.
Less repairs than the server lives are, is necessary, um, more lining, less. Replacement. Um, you know, that's essentially what it was.
See if I can do that again?
Okay, very, very, we're two for two. We're two for two so far.
Pretty good. Five hundred thousand, something else on that project. Um. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes unanimously. And I believe our last motion. Uh, for payment, Youngblood Haven.
Make a motion to approve payment number one. In the amount of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, seventy dollars and twenty-six cents. The Youngblood Haven Company for the twenty twenty-three road paving program.
Um, is there a second to this motion? Uh, John moved and Dave Brantley seconded. Any comments?
Versus call it copy and paste. Even this way, secondly, um, all remain, left the entire contract or or punch of signs for Youngblood address, they've been notified, nothing dramatic. Backfilling curves. Uh, finishing off some other parts and pieces and would expect the second payment to be the final payment for the project. If not set down, we're definitely.
Okay, um, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. And Scott, I was thinking we were gonna have. Did we do a bid for the bricks?
We did, we received no bids. So we immediately went back and advertised, this was part of the report, it's the beginning of work. No bids were received, so we immediately went back and re-advertised. Um, and the legal notice is in the paper, I don't recall what the, I thought the um. Might be August twenty-eighth, I believe is the bill they made for bricks again. Should we receive no bidders, kind of people out there, it's also prices from, and and do better.
Thanks. Okay, um, so remarks from council members? Um, John Arnold?
Well, I think I already made my remarks, you know. Concerning. Firming up the contribution for Presby. His fee-based approach to human spending. In place before the next.
Uh, Dave Brantley? Danny Braden?
I'd like to um. Suggest that we formally advertise or re-advertise for the emergency management coordinator.
I believe there's been discussions about possibly joining with other communities, and I don't know where that stands.
I had a talk with Allegheny County Emergency Management, and they will help us along the way. Um, we're on this right now without emergency manager coordinator, so. Um, between the two, you don't know if we can find the uh. Requirements of counties managing for the emergency manager coordinator, case point, if there's training, mandatory training for EMC. That's not our daily training for working with people, and they can't attend. Uh, we had two tasks, the road managers reached out to the conglomerate of municipalities on the, across the river, that share one emergency manager. And I reached out to uh. EMS, to the county, to get his office as well as director of management services. To see how they can help us out for loan finding people. Whilst we're thinking about them, there's also soliciting, engaging, which is either panels or flow. For their emergency manager coordinator.
Is this something the court could uh? Assist in? In the physical, small communities, maybe they don't have. Emergency management either there.
I I show, I know the court was seven numbers. I've listed three members already, the court are part of it. And they, I don't know if there's a stipends or if there's anything, but they definitely help with the training purposes.
Is this something I should bring up at the next court meeting?
Once I find out exactly from Burn, from Brono, I think we should talk about it.
This is, this is at least uh. Communities should pay it together with one emergency manager, is that a pay position?
I'm serious, no, it's just something at the point of the government. That it's trained by the county and certified by the county. And has the availability to do the trainings required by the company.
Uh, they, somebody, I mean. At least a certain amount to cover their.
It's, it's, the discussions are leading in that direction, and we're not the only ones challenging pertaining. Volunteers from the issue, and. Essentially, everybody who, we probably have a minimum standard required by the counties already involved, either it's police officer or a fire. Where is again, but then we've already said, you guys separated responsibilities for operations. And normally, as the public experience would show. Once the declared emergency came about, the county was getting there to charge the city anyways, so this is essentially the issue of the first world. You call it for county resources.
I think I would be aware, we don't pay a lot of too much, and they do train. Any insurance, and this number of calls, that's right. I just wonder if there was, you know, some reasonable way to. Solicite somebody to.
Yeah.
Well, we could basically for. The, the cost of off-site training. Since that seems like one of the big problems.
Well, talking to the mayor, talking to the ground mayor, he, he did some of the trainings and he told me this, it's during the day.
Yeah.
Like you can't have a day job. Like people who have a day job can't do this training. I wonder why they don't do them on Saturday. Right, he, that's what his big thing was, it was during the day, I mean, and it wasn't even off-site, they could do it on Sunday, but it's during the day.
Phil Albright commented on the design that the, the rules. To maintain credentials with the county of the emergency coordinator changed. Essentially without warning, and. He was brought up the first one during his sentence, that he can do the second, because the damage was required. And then they changed the pattern of doing, that was a challenge, that's a job, and there's a situation. I don't know what the move is, it's becoming more regionalized. Emergency coordinator service, I'm not sure, but. I can't remember the first, and it's been this long, there's two of us acting each other.
Maybe everybody even thinks that who they know in the community that might have the time that you're tired and also some of the background. Whatever that might be. Well, or.
They could allow, here to say. A lot of all the reporting, that's essentially through a county.
Any retirement uh, fire, or, you know, just things like this. Or if you happen to know somebody that just tends to have these kind of skills that's recently retired. Tracy, do you have anything?
Um, just a couple of quick things, so um, we did have another ADA meeting um, to review the Americans's Disabilities Act. And some of the different things, it's progressing, the committee is progressing very well, um, we're reviewing and prioritizing projects, we've already kind of. Um, finished that, and then we're also looking at obtaining potential costs, so we should be right online for budgeting to bring to the council. And then the HR committee, um, we did begin the handbook review, we have scheduled a second meeting to finalize it. Uh, and get it to Kate, and that second meeting is August thirty-first. And uh, we're starting to begin kind of like a review of salaries and payables and everything for um, budgeting purposes also. That's all I have.
Thanks, I know um. They've come up with a lot of things for ADA, and I just wanted to bring up one idea that you. Um, in these other meetings I have attended. The field house at the park. Is not used really by the school anymore, we use it for equipment and things. And it has a number of bathrooms in it, and I know one of the things was an ADA acceptable bathroom. At the park.
Yeah.
And so the. The field outs that had, you know, um. Dressing rooms and things, they each had a bathroom. That there may be a way to use that space in that plumbing to build out into a. Um, a reasonably good ADA approved space.
That sounds wonderful, thank you.
And uh, Jamie? I bet you have one.
I do, I'm excited on that, I, there's a, just two things, the first is that the um. Department of Environmental Protection Alternative Fuels Incentive Grant opened earlier this month. Uh, Billis was helping to keep an eye on it, and since we did electrify one of our fleet vehicles this year, I am applying. It doesn't run this Friday, so I'm wrapping up, Scott, I'll probably be after you later this week, cause I need one more letter just saying. We paid for the truck, but like the money has already been um. Sent. Um, so it would be lovely to get a little rebate uh, back on that, and the my big exciting news is. Is, as Mayor alluded to, the siren is in, it is installed, it is running. It is only one minute long. It is not quite as loud, it is still making a very siren-y sound, um, but it is a siren, so um. It's so far mostly positive response, I know there were even people on Nextdoor commenting on the.
Yes.
Abbreviated. Version of the siren, um, I'm so happy that we got it done before school, so thank you to Chief Flannick for coordinating installation, and thank you Scott for. Spaying on what has been a very long process, so, hooray, hopefully we don't talk about it.
Extraordinary.
Ever, yes.
But you said just the ten street siren? So we still have a normal siren here, right? Mechanical one?
That has already been replaced.
Well, this is already been.
Yeah, that's about a dollar of electronics.
Well, congratulations. Taking, agreed to take that on. Um. And Amanda, as we said, is absent today. Um. And uh. The communications, we already talked about that, the communications. Um, I figure it'll be worked on and um, ready for when she returns. And um, I just wanted to remind people that on Tuesday, tomorrow. There's an actuary meeting for those of you who um. Like these sort of things. Uh, I think it's a ten, is that right?
I lose, yes.
Okay. It's a ten, ten here, and um. We'll just talk about the M M O payments and then, you know, what um. Alternatives we have, and that was what, what Dave was alluding to on that one ordinance that. We'll pass that motion next month, once we can talk to the, that.
Set meeting in person or soon?
Yeah, but while they're, they'll be opposed. But we can sit in one room, watch on TV, here, we can watch both of your houses.
The actuary will be on soon.
And it'll, it's, in the past, it relatively short, I mean, it's not, not a long, I mean, at all. Um. And uh. I think everything else I have is, will be at the executive session tonight, and um. If there's nothing further by anyone, oh, I can take comments from the public. Anyone ask comments? No? All right, uh, then, could I have a motion for adjournment? I'll say, and okay, probably second.